Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the July 25, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff supports today. County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick. Roll call Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Gary.
Thank you Chair. This is the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Joining you online is Housing Resident Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Good morning Commissioner Leenstra.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. This is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda, two items. Item one, approval of Resolution 1992 authorizing a grant of up to $700,000 in affordable housing bond funds for the Short Stack Milwaukee Affordable Home Ownership Project and delegating authority to authorize representatives to finalize, execute, and deliver documents as necessary. Funding is through Metro Affordable Housing Bond Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of Resolution 1991 authorizing an $8 million loan of affordable housing bond funds and the allocation of 20 project-based regional long-term rent assistance vouchers to support the Wilsonville Transit Oriented Development Project and to designate authorized representatives to finalize, execute, and deliver all related documents. Funding is through the Metro Affordable Housing Bond and Metro Supportive Housing Service Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this list? I will accept a motion from Anne Leenstra.
I move for approval of the Housing Authority, yeah, Resolution 1992 and Resolution 1991.
Commissioner Leenstra has moved for approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner West has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you Commissioner Leenstra for joining. Next is a public hearing. Item one, approval of a board order approving the construction of two gates on Clackamas Road. Total value is $50,000 in one-time funding for gates and fencing through private contributions and approximately $75,000 for one-time funding for right-of-way cleanup through county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Mike Besner, Assistant Director of Transportation and Development, will present. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. Good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. We are here, we actually are joined in the audience with a number of partners in this discussion. We have representatives from the District Attorney's Office, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and H3S that will be joining us as a part of this discussion once Mike gives a brief update on our work to date. We've come to you at issues twice to talk and share with you the circumstances down that are currently occurring down off Clackamas Road. On June 25, 2024, we got Board authorization to bring forward a resolution for your consideration. Basically, just for the public's information, Clackamas Road is a dead-end county road between Minuteman Way and the Union Pacific Railroad line in the Clackamas Industrial Area. This public road only serves two property owners in addition to the railroad and a small piece of property owned by the Oregon Department of Transportation. I want to hand it over to Mike Besner, who's been doing a lot of work with the adjoining property owners and County Council on the particular request today.
Thanks. Good morning.
Morning.
So, as you know, this existing dead-end right-of-way has a significant number of people who are living in RVs and cars and trucks, resulting in piles of garbage and waste and hazardous materials and vandalism to the adjoining properties. For two years, a lot of the county partners have actually already been working on this site, including Sheriff's Office, County Council, H3S, the District Attorney's Office, and our department, DTD Transportation and Development. And then members of the Neighborhood Livability Project as well, consortium of agencies partnering to work on sites like this. The county partners and the local businesses have been in discussion on how to resolve it, how best to deal with it. And there's a variety of options. One was considering a road vacation, removing the public road designation, but we all realized that the most expeditious path forward was option of gating it and securing it and posting it with no public access. Per the county code, the Board can't take any action deemed to safeguard the best interests of the traveling public, and it specifically includes the authority to approve gates when necessary. I've personally been working with the four property owners, including the railroad and ODOT, and they, 100% of them are in favor of installing gates and fences and securing it. One of the adjoining landowners who's here today and I believe will be testifying, Convaco, is willing to construct two gates and some fencing at their own expense, and they've actually already received a bid to do so. If approved, the installation date would still be probably six to 10 weeks out because it takes a while to procure these materials, which gives the rest of the team time to work with people who are there. Once we know the actual gate construction date and our department would issue a permit if the Board approved it today, the county partners will begin engagement with the current occupants of Clackamas Road. Multiple agencies and nonprofit partners will inform them of the pending work, of available housing options, and of debris collection assistance. Will also offer to try and find sheltering at one of the county's contracted provider shelters. The outreach would continue until about a week prior to the beginning of the installation date. And at that time, the section of the road would be posted that this was coming and that people would have to leave and that it would require anyone still remaining to vacate the premises. The posting would apply to any individual who do not vacate it already in that six-to-10 week period that we would have to work with them or just didn't want to take advantage of the options that were, they were being given. The contractor for Convaco would then come in, construct some fencing in the two gates, one at either end. It would probably take one to two weeks to install, and then upon completion, no public access signs would be installed. Any remaining occupants and personal property at that point in time would be removed. Trash left behind would be cleared. And then based on the current condition of the site right now, what we've seen, it would be a concerted effort to clean it up, and that would be done at county road fund expense. The gate would then be locked, public access will be prohibited other than for the adjoining property owners, and obviously the county would have access to it as well. And then staff would still intend to move forward with a future road vacation, but we just know there's, there's some issues we'd have to figure out there, which would just remove the public road designation altogether and, and take the county out of the equation. It would revert to being just private property, but that would be a future, future effort that a little ways down the road.
I want to highlight there is, just to emphasize the fact, there is support for the right-of-way vacation at a future date. There are just some technicalities that have to be worked out before that action takes place. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Stewart from the District Attorney's Office to come and join us and just kind of share, because there was concern, I mean, we sent an email last week to kind of talk about our engagement plan, but I think it's important to, one, identify and honor some of the great work that's been done to date. There's been a lot of good work down there. And also the partnership and consortium of group that we have together to kind of assist in this particular issue. So with that, Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. Bill Stewart, DA's office, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This is a project we've been working on since October of 2022. Our partner, Love One, has led what they call traffic, trash extravaganzas. They've done six and a half of them since that time.
Six and a half, what again?
Trash extravaganzas. I, I just call them trash events. They go out and they load trash into containers and take it away. In addition, however, they bring out outreach connectors. They bring out the folks from CHAW, coordinating access. They bring out meals. They actually hire folks who are experiencing homelessness to help with the cleanup. And so we use these as lever points for connection and trying to get people into housing and engaged in services. And they've, quite frankly, been very successful for that. They've cleaned up over 460 QP yards of trash in these six and a half events. I say half because the last one was a mini event they did just this Friday to pick up one container. They've connected with 86 individuals with lived experience who've helped with the cleanups. They've probably been able to house, formally housed about eight folks out of that group that were living there on the site. They have connected with folks living there, close to 20 over that two-year period. We've run into some challenges because as we cleaned this up and felt very good about it, it just refilled. It was a real attractor, is a real attractor, both for folks with RVs, but also you'll see tents out there. And because it's right there on the railroad line, you have folks accessing that pathway to stay there because it's a convenient spot for them. And we've had significant criminal activity. We've had at least one arson and an assault, too. I think there's at least one other violent crime that's happened over the last two years. And so I think this is a great step forward to give us a chance to, to protect this area and be able to move out and keep working with other folks. I would also note that I've spoken with the folks at Love One. They're completely comfortable with this timeline. They're going to continue that engagement and work to get people to the best of their ability housed and connected with services with the partnership with H3S. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Stewart? Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah. Bill, Mr. Stewart, thank you for your presentation. Many of you probably know I brought this to the attention way back before October, so I appreciate you going out there and doing this. I happen to be the one Commissioner who lives in that part of the county, and it's been brought to my attention by business owners, not just this location, but other locations as well. And, and Mr. Stewart, you and I have worked together on some NLP projects, and this is one of them, so I really appreciate the effort. There had been complications over time where, you know, we're able to take maybe someone who's living in an RV or whatever it may be, or a pickup truck, and, you know, we were successful maybe in moving them along and they end up in someone else's neighborhood, right? So shifting the problem is not necessarily a successful model either, and that's my concern right now. And I've, you know, again, when I brought this to everyone's attention in 2022, my, my goal was how do we, number one, address the situation at hand for the local businesses and so forth, and also complain on the other side of the railroad tracks. There's another issue on the other side of the railroad tracks that people are not aware of. So that, as you said, or Dan said, or Mike said, the railroad tracks is basically a corridor in which these folks go on both sides, Highway 212, south, north, and farther into North County. So my sense is this solves a problem in one particular small geographic area, but the problem is, is that, you know, just displacing them and moving the problem around. So my hope was, it's not that I'm against this approach, it's really a timing issue, is that what do we have for resources for resolving the issue for those folks to get them in a better place so they're just not going to be somewhere else in the county or somewhere else down the street? And I just don't know what the strategy is and if we're ready for that and what tools, if not ready, what tools are needed to prevent that simple displacement so that some of these who are harder to serve, harder to help folks are not creating havoc for a greater population potentially if they land up in a neighborhood across the railroad tracks?
Two thoughts on that. These, this is a hard-to-serve population. Some of these folks we've had on the CHAW list, coordinating housing access, for a long time and have not been able to find something that fits for them. We're going to continue to work on that. The other point is that this, this serves as an attractor because it's so kind of protracted, and we've emptied it out and then it's refilled. It's very frustrating for that. And so this will at least stop that level of attraction. Yes, we will have some of these folks probably spread out on other streets, but we have active efforts to do the outreach and the connection and to move them if they're causing problems where they end up. I would also note that we've had success when we're able to do kind of a push-pull effort. Some of these folks don't want to make a change, but when we kind of were able to kind of confront them with, "No, or else it's time to move on," or "It's time to get connected with service," we've had better luck in getting them connected to that service. It's not going to work for everyone, but we're already kind of focused on this opportunity in terms of our partners, Love One, Father's Heart, those folks, to try to make sure we're engaging and then moving them into something better. And we're going to, we're going to work our tails off on that. So I, I'm hopeful that this will, A, address that immediate problem, and B, give us that push to help some of these folks get into the services they need.
Okay. So one, just one other, one other point I want to make, and that is that, or questioned and a point. With CHAW, we know who these, we know who the folks are that are here today, pretty much?
We think we know most of them because, again, we still have people coming in that we didn't know before.
And I, you know, I drive, just so you know, I drive by their, the hotspots, this is one of them, the hotspots of Clackamas County. I drive there once a week, every week, and I see the level of garbage and the level of residents go up and down, and you guys are making progress, and then pretty soon again, just like you just said, it fills back up. So I, you know, and I pity everyone in the area. Just so people know where the area is, if anyone knows where the old 82nd Avenue is and the DEQ station, that's how this came to my attention originally, back years ago, was that it's, it's quite visible. You could pull out of there and you look across the railroad tracks and you see, what's, what are all those RVs doing there? So it's messy, it's dirty, it's, it's not, not a proud, not a, not something we're proud of, but we're trying to resolve it. And again, I appreciate the Sheriff's Office, your office, and others trying to, trying to cope with this, right? Do we have, if we, if we know for the most part who these people are now today, and we've, we have turned some people through the system and got them in a better place, but we know who they are now, and they indeed show up in another neighborhood, is that something that you're, you're, what you're saying here today is that you feel that now we know who they are and they get displaced, and there's this opportunity for a change, right, a positive change? Is that something we can actually track and then, and then report back to us on a, like a monthly basis or, or every three months, a quarterly basis? I want to know how we're doing because this gets back to the recovery center, this gets back to all the things we don't have. This gets back to the parking ordinance that I really wanted to talk about at a greater level, which we never really got to, about how we keep some of these RVs and people using public streets for residing versus using for what they're intended for. And, and again, with the RVs and the trucks and the cars and all that, you know, my concern is in, if you don't have a parking ordinance, that's county-wide to deal with some of this stuff or have some hard, firm rules, we're not going to make much progress, and, and I just don't want to see anyone hurt.
So the, the answer to the question, can we report back and keep track of this? Short answer is yes, we can. I know our partners at the Sheriff's Office already have a list of RVs that they come into contact with, our folks at Love One who lead these events, and will be leading that effort of outreach and working with the folks at H3S. We know who's there, and we will know who's there at the day they get kind of pushed out. And so, yes, we can come back to you and let you know how we're doing.
Yeah. Because I, again, I want to make sure we're, that my point is that we're tracking the people from, from the point of which that, that road is gated. We're tracking the people. Because I'm not blaming the road, I'm not blaming the street, I'm not blaming the businesses.
Yeah.
You know, that's not the issue. It's not the street's fault that this is taking place. So if we can have that tracking, I would feel comfortable that we can actually bring to our attention our success and able to address this population.
And I, the only, the last thing I would say is that I'm thinking of one specific individual who was actually a victim of that arson that I referred to. She was incredibly resistant for us trying to get her into treatment and housing and those types of things for almost a year and a half. The great news is that she's actually, the last I heard was actually in a partner, our lead partners actually were able to get her housed, she accepted it. And so I, I share that example because it can take a year and a half or more to achieve that, but it's possible, and we're going to continue to work on that. So yes, we'll report back on that.
Right. And, and last question is, was about a month or so ago, Sheriff's Office asked for a change for the administrative warrants. Has that proved successful?
I believe that's coming to the-
Next week.
Next week.
For consideration, yeah.
Yep.
It's on my calendar to be back here for that.
Yep, thank you.
I just, again, my point is this is a timing issue for me. So if I vote no today, it's not because I don't feel the pain. Again, I brought this to everyone's attention. It's a matter of getting all the pieces in place so that it's timed correctly.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
Morning, gentlemen. Yeah, Commissioner Savis asked some of my questions, but let me ask one a slightly different way. Do we have visibility on other areas in Clackamas County where we see one or two RVs building up that could potentially become another Clackamas Road?
Short answer is yes. We have the NLP team, Neighborhood Livability Program Team with the Sheriff's Office that's constantly out there working. We have two other sites in the Clackamas Industrial Area, but they're essentially street parking, street sites, and we keep working those. And so I drive out there, but I know our Sheriff's Office are out there all the time, and our outreach people are actively looking and finding and connecting with those folks.
Okay, that's good news. Uh, yes, Dan?
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I just want you to take a gander at the, at the people in the room today. Because essentially, and it's funny, I was talking to Adam about this, I don't think you have had a coordinated effort like this on this topic in the history of Clackamas County. And you're right, we can't solve all the problems, and there will be other issues that spring up, but there are successes out there. I'm not sure if you had the chance to drive on like Capes Road or 120th. I mean, those, I was just out there last week, and I was amazed. It was clean. The road looked great. There's a couple occupants in very small areas minding their own business, doing their own stuff, not putting trash everywhere, but overall, that area has historically been a very difficult area, a difficult, challenging area. The word's getting out in the street about these certain areas and how we're taking care of them. We're collaborating with all of our partners to figure out how to fund these removals as, and leveraging funds to the greatest extent possible. So I'm just putting a plug in for not the great work, but the great work the team is doing.
Right. Okay, great. That's, that's great news. Then the other thing, too, is on the $75,000 one-time funding for the right-of-way cleanup, is that going to include disposal of some of these derelict RVs and trailers that are there? By my count, approximately 12 of them.
It depends on who, who removes those or if they leave them and they're unoccupied and they're abandoned. We have other funding sources as well. Primarily, that's going to deal with a lot of the garbage, but we do, if you recall, previously, we've established kind of a, a protocol around removal of these RVs that are unoccupied. Clackamas County Sheriff's Office does a great job in coordinating with County Council, Scott Seaco at County Council and myself. We work through our financial group at DA Rolandon, trying to figure out what the most available viable funding source is. County Road is kind of our stopgap for the funding, but we will look for other funding as well. We, more than likely, will use some of that metro money to get rid of RVs specifically if they're abandoned. Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner West?
I am going to first by, you know, just like as a Commissioner apologizing to Conveo, I hope I'm saying it, Convaco Manufacturing Company. As a Commissioner, thank you for still enduring this with us and choosing to do business in our county. You're appreciated, and we care about you. I know we talk a lot about the needs of those that are homeless, and we do care about that, and that's been a big effort, and we've given mountains of resources to these individuals, and we keep trying to get creative with this persistent and chronic problem, but we don't say thank you to the businesses that stick it out with us. And my God, there's that saying, a picture's worth a thousand words, and men, and they've provided plenty of pictures of what they've had to endure as a job creator, as a company that signs the front of paychecks to allow people to not be homeless and to be members of our community and to invest and pay taxes, and it's just truly unacceptable that they've had to continue over a long period of time, regardless of our efforts, to endure this. At a certain point, the electorate and the businesses, we just have to realize we don't have to tolerate this anymore either. We shouldn't have to tolerate this. And so I'm sorry that you have, and I, I think that I wouldn't be shocked at all if my colleagues had that same sentiment and empathy for what you have had to endure. It is not okay, and we are trying, but maybe we haven't tried hard enough, but we are I, I do share some of Commissioner Savis's concerns. I think it's, you know, in a region, we don't act alone. We're often, you know, victims of other jurisdictions that share long borders with us that have a more chronic and persistent issue with homelessness than Clackamas County does. Not all of these are our residents, some of them are transitory. And so I think, I don't know, I know Commissioner Savis, you've brought up parking ordinances. I don't know if that solves it or promotes, I don't know if that creates more of a whack-a-mole. I don't know. I know that this has been difficult to handle. My question for staff is, does House Bill 4002 with deflection give us any more teeth to not do this kind of, you know, cycle any longer here specifically with this street? I've been down the street multiple times, and it actually was at times dangerous and threatening. It was not safe. I, I thank God that none of these employees were ever assaulted. I don't think any of the employees were ever physically assaulted, but it is just not safe. And I didn't know if House Bill 4002, like, where will that inter, I know it's not, we're working on it. Talk to me about how this will intersect with this problem.
It will, and that's one of my responsibilities through the DA's office is to help set the, what they call the deflection process up. It will give us more tools. When we identify folks that have possession of small amounts of hard drugs, we're going to have some more tools to try to push them into treatment, and that is the strategy that we've reported back to our Lipsec governing body on that. And yes, I think it will give us some more tools. We still have the challenge of that RV or that tent sitting, in this case, on southeast Clackamas Road, but in terms of addressing the needs of the individuals by getting them into treatment, by pushing them into treatment, 4002 gives us a chance where we didn't have it before.
Are those that were heavily resistant to treatment and care continued to trespass and/or break any of our laws, ordinance, or the rule of law in our county, are any of them currently sitting in our jail? Were they prosecuted?
Oh, we prosecuted multiple cases out of there.
Okay.
But I can't, I can't, I don't know if any of those specific are sitting in jail today, but yes, we prosecuted when we had the opportunity.
I know that we don't want to be prosecute first and try to, and we want to get people treatment and care and reverence services, but when I drove by there, it seemed like there was a certain population that was ripe to spend some time behind bars to maybe have a different type of intervention than a nice handshake and a, and a little bit of a pull toward services, and one maybe that was more appropriate for the justice system. So how is, is it refilling with new people or is it the same people continue to break the law?
For the most part, it's, it's a refilling. I remember back in October of '22, we felt really good about how clean we got it. There was connections made, it was shocking, and then it was just kind of heartbreaking to go back out there about a month or two later, and it looked like we hadn't even done anything. We, that, that site has continued to track and refill. As we've gotten people pushed out or, or connected, we've had new people come in.
Why that site specifically, if those people are being held accountable by the law and actually are in our justice system at a certain point? Why, is it new people or are we allowing people to reoffend?
Well, when we, when we arrest or charge somebody with a crime, we don't hold them, depending on the level of the crime, they're going to get out. And so they'll go back to where they're comfortable and where their, where all their stuff is. And so the challenge has been actually changing that physical dynamic and location by being able- able to move those RVs. And we haven't really been able to do that unless they were abandoned. And so this process, and of course, the RV warrant opportunity next week, will give us the chance to put pressure on those RVs so they don't just continue to be a point source of crime and just new people roll into them.
Okay. Second question, I see a lot of photos, and I saw them myself, that place was awash with a biohazard and hypodermic needles.
Yes.
A lot of the hypodermic needle exchanges are done under the ethos and the promulgation of harm reduction. Today, in these photos, it seems like a lot more harm than it does reduction. And I am curious about, as Clackamas County, we do engage in needle exchange, which a lot of the needles seem to be ending up on our streets. Do we require someone to give a needle to get a needle to exchange it? Or are we just proliferating needles into the community that end up on the streets, and then businesses are having to clean them up at risk to themselves and their staff? How is, and being littered? So I'm curious about the policy around our needle exchange, because, Dan, we talked about it on D Street when I first took office. That got cleaned up quickly, thank you, but that was not, that street was an issue. There were needles everywhere. And so I guess I'm also concerned about how do we mitigate this type of biohazard being the community? I don't think Clackamas County residents expect that when they do a needle, that this is where the needles are going from needle exchange. I don't think they want that. I think they want harm reduction to reduce potential harm to those struggling with substance abuse disorder, substance use disorders. But I don't think they see this as a reduction in harm when it ends up all over their streets and in front of their businesses. So I'm concerned about how we are doing these exchanges. And do we actually require an exchange? You give me a dirty needle, I'll give you a clean needle. We're intersecting with services, we're going to help you like get off of these substances, we're going to get you the care you need. Unless we're just pat you on the head, here's your needle, and then it just ends up on our streets, and the only thing that's happening is people aren't actually getting clean, and they're just impacting the community negatively as a whole. So I guess that's kind of the balance. When I see these pictures, it makes me think about like, is this working? I think there's some evidence around this. I'm not trying to say never do a needle exchange, I get all of that, but I think we have a problem here, a lot of these needles end up in our streets.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to make an observation here, that the size and scope of these issues with our homelessness folks, and however and whenever they get their substance abuse, losing medical coverage, all those other reasons, and they devolve down into this level of economic non-prosperity. But my observation is, it really takes the three sectors of civil society coming together to solve the size and scope of these kinds of issues, and that is you folks, as our public folks and human resources, you know, working with our public safety system. A business coming forward with an issue and a problem, I looked at the business here, really outstanding manufacturers, welded steel, mill and drag chains, sprockets, engineered plastics, friction bearings, roller and sharp top chains, hammerhead wastewater systems, metallic and non-metallic chains. And the reason I mention this is, we pulled together the public piece with all of our resources across various domains of governance. We are working with the business and the business community, and we're working with the groups like Love One and, you know, Ant Farm, all the nonprofit groups that we work with. And I believe very sincerely, the reason why, comparatively speaking, we seem to be the most successful at this point with a very, with a very thorny problem and heartbreaking issues of houselessness, but because we recognize that we've crossed domains and that we are working together collaboratively on a problem of this magnitude, I think that that is the example that we need to get the word out about. And I am hopeful the business, I'm going to, I think we have somebody here from the business today. I'm often wondering if you couldn't go like to the Clackamas County Business Alliance, the Oregon City Business Alliance, and talk about this problem. Don't just show these pictures to us, but go and do a framework where you talk about how everybody got together to solve the problem. Because I think that's critical, and I think it's really the major reason that we are really helping, being successful, helping those less fortunate than us. And really relieving serious dependence and hopefully relieving suffering from both sides, whether it's the business that's suffering because of the bad behavior and the people who have the issues that need our help. So, just an observation, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We are technically in a public hearing portion of this. We're going to hold all Commissioners' further comments until after we complete that, but I just want to make my statement now. I want to thank all of the folks that were involved in this. Now Commissioners, over the past, I don't know how many years, even before I came chair, our charge was, staff, you go out and fix the homeless problem, okay? Fix it, fix it, fix it. So what have you done? You're trying to fix it. We have the District Attorney's Office, we have the Sheriff's Department, we have the Transportation Department, we have the Road Department, and our Human Service Department with a solution to fix a very small area. It may be a small area, however, the impact is huge. This is not a residential area. Don't pretend like anybody lives in this area. They don't live in this area. I'm equally aware of it as Commissioner Savas is. And yes, just because a railroad passes by, traveling north and south for many, many miles where the homeless lives, does not mean we cannot fix this small problem. I believe, for whatever reason, this is a very dark sight, and it attracts criminal activity. The minute you take somebody out, they go back in there with their illegal RVs that are in horrid condition, and they continue their drug abuse, abuse, sales, maybe prostitution. And I don't even, can't even imagine all the crimes that are going on in there. Thank you very much, business owners, for not leaving Clackamas County.
Uh huh.
I mean, you could go to a place where you could manufacture what you do and be successful without these headaches. I'm so appreciative that you're able to continue to do business in very difficult circumstances. I'm going to save the rest of my comments for later. Gentlemen, thank you for coming up, please remain. We are going to continue now with the public hearing on this and take testimony of those who wish to testify. If anybody wishes to testify, please put a blue card in the basket and we will call on you. So far, we do have one person in the room, Suzanne Warman. Would you please come forward, ma'am? State your name, your area of residence, and why you are here today.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Warman. I live in Clackamas County, and I'm representing Conveco Manufacturing today.
Thank you.
Of course. I just want it to be said that we are not incompassionate to the homeless. You know, people have fallen on hard times, or whatever their case may be. We completely understand that, but as a business, it's becoming untenable for us to keep spending the money we're spending. They're cutting our fences, they're trespassing, they're defecating on our property for the lack of restrooms. We put in a brand-new gate, we can't use it because the garbage is piled halfway up the front of it. The scariest part, though, is for our employees, because for whatever reason, sometimes the homeless become enraged, we don't know, we haven't, you know, prompted it, but they'll come after, run after our employees if they're outside yelling and screaming. Our employees are becoming progressively more uncomfortable. We've had five people leave because of it. And replacing those employees is sometimes difficult because they're specialized in what they did. It was just to them, it wasn't for them, they have families, and they felt it wasn't Anyway, I listed all the issues in my packet, but I guess I just wanted to touch on the fact that I've had to pick up needles off our property every other day, the drug paraphernalia. And I put it in a bio bucket because that's the proper way to dispose of it. But it's gone on for over a year. And it just gets worse and worse. We just had our property all re-escavated and leveled to try and make our truck routes better through there, and every day, there's drug paraphernalia all over the property. They're actually throwing it because it's like 20 feet in to the property. So from the fence line, it's 12 feet to where the drug paraphernalia is ending up. So I don't get them, I don't get their thought process, the garbage is all around them, but the drug paraphernalia is on our property. So I don't know what the thought process is there, but I did want to let you know that we are picking it up and we are putting it in a biosafe container. The other thing is, I've already said that. So we have currently spent over $30,000 just in fixing holes they've cut in our fence. Oh, I'm sorry. How much, I don't want to take a ball-
What kind of time is your one?
Oh. So anyway, we spent over $30,000 thus far in four months fixing the holes they've cut in our fence, the locks that they've tried to cut. And then we've offering to donate $50,000 to a new, the new fencing and gates to try and help resolve the issue. Plus, they, we've had vendors that won't deliver to us because if they have to go through Clackamas Road, like we had this huge piece of equipment that we needed delivered, Clackamas Road typically offered that width to deliver it to the back of our building. They refused to go. So we had to make other arrangements, which was put a new gate on our property to accommodate that. So that was another $12,000 to put that in. So I just wanted to share that thus far, with the gate that we're committing to putting in, is like, we're at $100,000 in four months.
Thank you for providing the packet.
And I don't-
Excuse me. Thank you for providing this packet that outlines every, my microphone was off. Please continue.
And I don't get paid for picking up the drug paraphernalia, it's just something that we want to do to protect our employees and anyone else entering our property, that you just don't know what kind of drugs they are. So it's just been kind of, it's just getting to the point where, as I shared with Mr. Bezner, that we just can't do it anymore. So we're hoping that the Commissioners will please consider letting us put up fencing and gates to prevent this from ongoing.
How many years have you been at this location?
Over 50.
50. And how many employees do you have?
Eighty-five.
Wow.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, when I finish. This gate that you're installing looks substantial.
It is substantial.
I hope it solves the problem going forward on this. So if this gate, if this road is gated, will your deliveries possibly return those vendors who have refused to deliver? Would they be able to gain access through a key card situation or something like that?
Well, they can access now because we had to put in that extra gate, we couldn't wait for our equipment to be delivered. But what we're hoping to do is, by doing this, helping our community, the fires really scare us. The fire department there was there last week putting out another fire, not only in the encampment, but a brush fire by the railroad. And if that took off, that could affect the community, not just our businesses. So that's our hope, is that we can be helpful in helping the K-Hoot recycling business, Union Pacific ourselves, and just Camp Whiticum, and then the other homes and businesses across the railroad tracks. Because if that brush fire had taken off, the fire department hadn't got there timely, it's so dry right now that I was afraid it would have taken off, especially if the wind had been really active that day.
And you're right about that. We're acutely aware of the fire danger in all areas, the dryness-
Well, right now, we've got lots of fires going on, and we just don't want one more, right?
And there may be some questions for Commissioners. Commissioner West?
A quick question. I think if you're testimony today, it's quite powerful. Have you had any needle sticks from yourself or any employees at all? Any potential medical risks associated with picking up the needles and having to clean up the mess?
No, because I use this mechanical grabber where, you know, it's this height, and I just put it in the bio jug.
Okay. I'm just astonished by the price tag in four months that you've had to pay. It is not fair as a business that you carry that burden, considering that this is really a public kind of, this is a public problem, this is all over problem, and you guys have really disproportionately had to carry your fair share of it. I recognize that, thank you.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Warman before we continue with the discussion?
I have just a comment, not a question.
Go ahead.
But that's not why I turn my light on, but I'll take the opportunity.
Well, I would, if you have a question for her, go ahead.
I have a comment, just to-
All right, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say my apologies as well for what you're going through. I do also do know your business was impacted when we put the Talbert overpass over several years ago, right, during that Phase 1 of the Sunrise Corridor. So I appreciate your cooperation there as well. Heard from, you know, I've heard from a number of businesses along that, in that area, both, on both sides of the railroad track. So I, what you're sharing is not uncommon to hear from other businesses, and some who actually chose to move, and some actually chose to close their businesses on the 82nd Avenue portion. So it's got deep impacts. So I'm hoping we can be effective and help many businesses with some better policies and solutions.
I look forward to that as well, and I sincerely appreciate your consideration on letting us potentially put up that fencing and gates. It'll be on a combination lock, so department heads can decide who can access through there. So ODOT, Union Pacific, Camp Whiticum, K-Hoot, and of course, police department and county.
Okay. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just had a question. Now, when I look at your address, you have close proximity to Camp Whiticum, is that?
Right across the street.
Yeah. Have they been helpful in any way? And maybe this is for our public partners, too. Have we had any discussions with the guard and the folks from that base to maybe be part of the partnership?
I personally haven't, but I don't know about the other, you know, departments.
In the past, we have cooperated, they've been another public partner in these kinds of initiatives that we've done here in the county. And when I realized the proximity, I was just curious. So I might suggest that there be another contact that we work with, not just for the business you have and who you're working for, but for everybody in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Warman, for coming forward. We're going to continue with the public hearing. You can take your seat, and maybe somebody will have a question later. Tony, do we have anyone online who wishes to testify on this issue today?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I will continue, I will now close the public hearing for testimony, and Commissioners, we will continue. Any further discussion? Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I do have a question. I mean, I want to be able to support this, but the timing issue is the key thing for me. So I do have a question if maybe perhaps Adam and one of the Sheriff's deputies could approach, if that's okay with you, Chair?
Sure, go ahead. Adam and whatever Sheriff's deputy drew the short stick, come on up. Adam, go ahead, or-
Paul, what's your question? I'm sorry.
So as I mentioned, I drive through all the hotspots once a week and familiar, and I hear businesses and residents that complain as people come and go. And I do know that you guys address a lot of that as best you can. Recently, there's some of the folks apparently, or at least one of them for sure, that was on Clackamas Road relocated to Ford Avenue. Are you familiar with any issues on Ford Avenue?
So my name's Jesse Ashby, and I'm an undersheriff with the Sheriff's Office. So I don't have any specific knowledge of Ford Avenue, but I'm sure that the deputies have responded if there's been calls for service there.
Right. And the other street that gets some of that- Right. And the other street that gets some of that back and forth, the whack-a-mole thing, is Orchard Avenue over there by the Walmart, I'm forgetting the name of that little restaurant there.
The Applebee's.
Applebee's.
Sir, I'm very familiar with that one.
Yep, yep. And that's a hotspot. And there's others, Cozy, others, and so forth. But I did want to just ask the question, if there was, if you were the king for a day and there was a timing issue between the administrative warrants and all this going into place, what would that be, that timing? And what tools do you need to be successful?
Well, that's, that's obviously a hard question, right? Because there's, you know, everyone's been trying to figure out this puzzle, and now I've become king for the day to solve the puzzle, right? So, in your scenario. So I think, you know, I think like Mr. Stewart has said, and also in the presentation that we did when we've come to you about the administrative warrant, and we're coming back next week, it is this, this push and pull. And I, I mean, from, you know, my experience is 25 years in law enforcement, and so my experience is, is that there has to be some sort of mechanism that gives us the authority to be there, gives us the authority to take action. Because otherwise, it's just kind of a, are you willing to play with me kind of game. And so I think that for us, the, these sorts of, kind of, giving the tools, whether it's the gate, or it's these administrative warrants, or what you're talking about, those give us the tools to then kind of be standing on firm ground legally when we're interfacing with people. Because, you know, maybe people want to, maybe people want to get in services, and we have our partners here, and we're all in on that. But sometimes people don't. And so for, for me, and where, and the people that I supervise, having good legal policies and ordinances and laws is kind of the first step to get to where. So I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah, just to some degree. I'm going to ask Adam the same question.
Fair.
You know, Commissioner, I can't, I won't necessarily speak to the, the timing, but I just, I really appreciate the partnership that we have with our law enforcement partners, the district attorney's office, the DA's office, our partners in transportation and development. And I agree with the push and pull approach. I think where jurisdictions fail is you got some pushing, but it's not in the direction of the pulling. Maybe you have some pulling, but it's not catching the pushing. We're doing it differently. We got somebody on one side doing some pushing, and the pulling's there reaching their hand out to, to pull. And that's what's working. And so I'll, I'll continue to be in favor of the pushing, because I, I think you need that in order to be successful on the pull side sometimes, right? People need, we get, we get comfortable in routines. We accommodate people as a community because we're compassionate. But that accommodation, in the long run, isn't necessarily the best thing for our community or for the people that are there. So fully in favor of the model that you're hearing about today, and I appreciate the coordination we have in Clackamas County.
So from a timing issue, the administrative warrants would be a benefit to be in place first? Yes, no?
I think maybe that's a question for legal counsel or ADA. Stuart, Jane, can you address that?
So the administrative warrant is coming before the board next week. If the board adopts it as an emergency due to health, health and safety, it's effective that day. So if the board goes ahead and adopts this board order today, what I understand the process is going to be is that there's going to be a delay for the gates. But in the meantime, there's going to be outreach from H3S for voluntary compliance in the next couple of days. And then if those efforts fail, and it will take some time to see like how that develops, by next week, assuming the board adopts it, there will be an ordinance for action by the sheriff if there isn't voluntary compliance. So I don't think that there will be a practical impact for the, the one week wait for the ordinance hearing.
Okay, so the, the plan is to make that an emergency ordinance to go into place immediately?
So it is not currently scripted that way, but I was looking at it this morning, and I think that would be my recommendation to the board.
Point of clarification for County Council. What, didn't this board already take action on the administrative warrant issue?
I believe there was a hearing at issues, and it's coming up for a public hearing.
You had a policy session where you approved the action to move to a business meeting. So you've already approved it, you're just not-
So we've already approved it. I think what's coming forward is not going to be an issue with this particular action we're going to take today.
I, I don't see that either. But I think the question is, do they need to have that in place? Because the ordinance has not been adopted. That will come before the board next week. So-
So they could, they could pause for a week. We could pass this today, they could just pause or whatever?
I don't even think they have to pause. I think that they can go out there and talk to the occupants. But they can't do anything on an administrative ordinance until the board adopts that ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
Chair, just, just to follow, just quickly follow. So some of these RVs clearly are marked. When they relocate somewhere, you can recognize them pretty easily. Some are not, so easy. But I do want to just point out that across the railroad tracks due west is a, is a housing, there's, there's housing there. There is, is a residential area just north of the DEQ, across the street. That's all housing, residential. Not all, but a lot.
Across 82nd?
Across the railroad tracks.
Across 82nd?
Across the railroad tracks. And those residences access their homes off of Old 82nd Avenue. So you go north of DEQ, just across the street north, and you're going to be, you're in residential area. Also, due west on Minuteman Way, there's also a housing area. I know people, people have contacted me because they're dealing with issues there on a, on a basis, I think I took Commissioner West on a few of those streets, including Clackamas Road a while back. So this issue of, of the whack-a-mole thing is, is real. We're experiencing it. We see it all over. And to me, it is frankly why I try to be, be the camping or the parking thing, is this is really illegal camping on public streets and which are designed to be for parking. And unless we do something with regards to illegal camping on our public roads, and whatever tools we need to address that, you know, I, I think it's already illegal, but we're not really enforcing it, I guess. I, I've heard a mixture of different things. So again, getting complaints on Ford Avenue, I get complaints about Orchard Ave, a whole bunch of areas where these people just move around. But that's my concern. So be mindful that, again, right across the street, I'm concerned that people are going to migrate into those neighborhoods, right across railroad tracks, or down off of Minuteman Way to the west.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
Chair, if you'll permit it or indulge me, I'd like to make actually two motions if we are at that point.
I don't see any other discussion going on. Gentlemen, thank you for coming forward. Stay in the room. We may have to ask you another question. Commissioner West, do you have a motion?
I'm going to make two separate ones, just because they will, the second will probably invoke more discussion. But the first motion, I will move we approve the board order authorizing the construction of two gates on southeast Clackamas Road between the Union Pacific Railroad and Minuteman Way.
And I will second that.
Commissioner West has moved we approve the board order authorizing the construction of two gates on southeast Clackamas Road between the Union Pacific Railroad and Minuteman Way. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Continue, Commissioner West.
Are we going to vote on this motion? Or do you want me to make two in a row?
Do you, do you have any discussion?
I have no dis, I have no discussion on this specifically, but I will on the second motion.
Okay, good. Any further discussion, Commissioners, on this motion?
I, I do, I guess. So Commissioner West, I just might ask you what your second, I know you're not making the motion, but what your second motion may be. Again, I want to be able to vote for this, and this to me is a timing issue, is a coordination issue.
My, my second motion is going to be the long lines of participating or funding the fence, that this business is going to have to endure another $50,000 in cost that we look at helping to fund that as a county. That is the gist of my second motion.
Okay. I think we'll discuss that issue. We have a motion on the table that we need to vote yea or nay on, and then we can open it up discussion for your second motion. Thank you very much. Tony, please take the roll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner's office?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes. Five, excuse me, 4-1. Commissioner West, you're up.
I move that we participate in the funding of the proposed fencing and gates for Can-Am chains, up to $50,000 to secure their facility.
There is a motion from Commissioner West to fund the gates for Can-Am chains, which is also Conveco Manufacturing Company, up to $50,000. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Savas has seconded the motion. Dan and Mike, you have come forward. I bet you have additional information for us on this.
Oh, yes.
Please, continue.
It's never easier when government builds it. I appreciate the comment and I appreciate the concern. We had a good discussion with, Mike can probably speak more eloquently to this because he's been coordinating with all the property owners. We thought about that, long and hard about it. One of the things that, a couple of things that resonated with, that enlightened the discussion, for lack of a better word.
You didn't what?
That enlightened the discussion on us paying money for the fence. One was the generosity and willingness from the joint property owner to do this, to deal with the issue. We're all doing our little parts. We're paying for the cleaning and getting RVs out and getting all that cleaned up for them. Secondly is the fact that if we get involved in it, the cost goes up because it becomes a bully wage job. And there's going to be-
We're not asking the government to construct it, Dan. Don't, make no mistake.
That's the question, is how would we do this?
We're asking for a payment to the company.
I, I think it will still trigger bullying.
Why can't they, you know, this is why I hate government, okay? This is a very generous, simple offer, and you're coming forward and totally darkening what we want to do. Now, I know for a fact, you know, it could be a grant situation. We do grants all the time. We can word this in such a way that it does not trigger bullying or any other more expensive situations out there.
We could research other funding sources and see. It is our, not out of desire to darken the shadows in this lovely environment.
Not at all.
It is the rules in which we have to live in within the-
Okay, Gary. I have a couple of questions going forward on this. Can we structure this payment if it's approved in such a way that it does not trigger bullying and any more government interference from DTD? And secondly, where would the money come from?
I have a suggestion. This is off the cuff, thinking on the fly. We could potentially use lottery dollars and support this company in other ways that help defer the cost of the gate while not directly paying for the gate is an option.
Yeah, fence.
We could do that.
Okay. What about current funds that is in H3S to help with this situation?
I'd, Adam left, didn't he?
Where's Adam?
He left.
Go get him, please.
Maybe, it's possible. We have to think about that. Yes, we could-
Wait for Adam to come forward.
I mean, clearly, we'll, if this is your-
Adam, there's a motion on the table to pay $50,000 to help this company defray the cost of the gate. These two gentlemen said it might trigger a bully, be more expensive. We're talking about funding sources. Please take a chair. Commissioner, Administrator Schmidt had remarked maybe lottery funds. I mentioned, isn't there some pot of money in H3S that could possibly help with this?
So, sorry for stepping out. We were, Cindy and I were talking about our, our recovery center project. So I think if there's a will, there's a way. $50,000 in, in the big picture of, of our budgets, right, is relatively modest. So if that's the board's will, then the department will work to figure it out.
I would request there be one modification to the motion. Take the dollar amount out. If you, if you take the $50,000 reference out and just say, amendment to say, we would, we actively want staff to look on a way to assist with the funding of the gate, and then that allows us to look at other opportunities that are around. It doesn't limit that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Warman would like to come forward to make a comment. Could you make a way for her, please?
Thank you.
Please state your name again, please.
Suzanne Warman, representing Conveco. Commissioners, thanks so much for considering helping us. Only the thing I would like to bring up is if we're successful in getting the road vacated, I don't want your investment to, you know, just be a gift, I guess. So we looked at the fence and gate as an investment for K-Hoot and us in vacating the road, at some point down the road.
So are you saying that you will take ownership of the road once it's vacated?
Mm-hmm.
And so in exchange for that, you're willing to accept the full cost of the gate and fence?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, for coming forward. We have further comments, Commissioner West, and then Commissioner Scholl, whatever, who wants to speak first. Go ahead. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes. Okay, so I have some compassion for Conveco. This is very unfortunate. But I like to remind everybody that we have an untold number of businesses in the county who have been damaged by something similar to what's happening on Clackamas Road, maybe not to that degree. But we've had businesses that have had costs in dealing with homeless encampments, damage to buildings, trash cleanups. And so I do have a concern that if we approve this last motion, that we might be looking at setting a precedence for paying for other private property that is damaged in the same way that our good friends at Conveco have been damaged. So let's think about that.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I, I thought about that exact same thing, and I would default to that too. Also, Commissioner Scholl, the taxpayers have spent over a billion dollars with failed services and persistent problems. I mean, Clackamas County is a little bit of a bright spot in the region, but my God, like, at a certain point, like, I think these businesses deserve to have like a secure fence so that their employees don't want to quit, and so that they can bring in orders, and so they can do the business necessary in the county that has been here for 50 years with 85 employees. I, at a certain point, I just am like, I'd rather start to give maybe a little bit of relief to the actual business owners and the job creators than to a bunch of grifting nonprofits and throughout the region that haven't been nearly as effective and important as our businesses have been. And this state all too often does not value what business does. It sees it as a piggy bank to fund all of this, but then the problem never gets solved, and they have to sit up and pick up needles all day long. They're expected to pay the new cat tax, or this tax, or this. They're, a politician always wants them to be a piggy bank, but then when they have a real crisis on their front door, the politicians don't step up for the business. And so, fine, let all the businesses come before us and ask for money. Let every single business of Clackamas County that has had to endure this for this many years come and sit before us and say, please help me, somebody stand up and represent my business, my employees, and my communities. I get it. We all care about this crisis, but my God, I am tired of these people being taken advantage of when they risk everything to do business in our community, and we don't risk anything as politicians for them. Never. Never. Ask the governor, where is she? I mean, I'm serious. I'm just tired of the conversation. This is a drop in the bucket. We can find the $50,000 or whatever they need to build a fence so that they can have a safe, profitable company. That's the least we can ask. They've been here for 50 years. Sorry to get hot in the color. I don't usually yell at the dais, but I am tired of business being taken advantage of. Commissioner Scholl, that is not what you're saying. I just got a little passionate. I just am going to stand up and stand in the gap for our job creators today. That is what I am doing.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Three other Commissioners are in the queue. However, Gary Schmidt, you have your light on.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is not about the money. It's about the concern about the, the public contracting laws, that even if you give any part of public money, it may raise the part of the project. Would you consider postponing this until Tuesday so staff can do the legal research? Because this is on the fly. We weren't prepared to answer this today, just so we can give you all the facts before you make the final decision.
We have three other Commissioners in the queue, Gary. Thank you for that suggestion. Commissioner Savas, I think you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I, I share Commissioner West's passion and frustration over this. I also think that Commissioner Scholl has raised a very good point. I can think of two business owners, I think I mentioned earlier, two business owners in that particular area that shut their business down. One of them in particular said, did shut his business down not because he wanted to, he couldn't get his employees to show up any longer. They were intimidated from actually being in the business, in the building because of this population. Okay? So, yeah, I guess Commissioner Scholl, you raised a very good point. It is a precedent. I can see those, I can see those, the faces of those gentlemen right now that had their businesses and are no longer there. And the ones that are suffering with it today, I still hear about. It's frustrating. It's very frustrating. Again, I live, I live in this part of the universe of the county in which this population is, is creating a lot of havoc, more so than, than any other area of the county. other area of the county. It is very frustrating to hear these people passionately say, in their own neighborhood, with their kids, right? And I'm in their homes or on their property, and the whole neighborhood's gathered around, and they're upset. And they're sharing as much, if not more frustration, and personal stories about this. And I know our sheriff deputies are doing the best they can to—and our NLP folks to do the best they can to address this, but I share that. I just want you to know. I'm—one of these people I'm known for being relatively calm. I try to maintain my calmness to keep my head clear, but it's not—it's very easy to get wrapped up in the emotion. And I'll tell you, literally, where I even live, it's—I count the homeless population every day I go home—every day I go to work and every time I come home, I can count them.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, we need to move this along. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, I'm going to make a suggestion here because I think I've got a glimmer of a solution. And I do like Gary's—and I love your enthusiasm, Ben. I just—good for you. But I think the solution is this. I think we need to talk about it and see when, where, and how. But if I recall, this should be a discussion that our economic development partners, our folks, Laura and DTD have, because my understanding that they have been working on lottery dollars to help businesses stay put and expand. So because the three rules of economic development are retention, expansion, and then recruitment. And I don't see why some dollars—but we have to talk it through first, looking at it from that viewpoint of retention and expansion. Definitely, it has to do with retention. I'm wondering if the framework that we came up with with those lottery dollars for the business piece, as well as the education piece for workforce through the community college, that it can't somehow be used for that. Okay? That's where I'm going with this. But that's why I would prefer not to vote on this today, but I agree with Gary. Let's talk about it. Everybody agrees we want our businesses to stay here, and we've been working on it a long time. But I think we may have a framework already in place that would allow us to do that. We just got to check it out.
Okay.
So that's my suggestion.
Okay. We have other Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that very much. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, I just want Ms. Warman to know that, one, I'm not a politician, and, two, my focus is in the role I play as the county commissioner is concern for the family and small business. That's mission number one for me. The—this problem that you have on—that we have on Clackamas Road is not a Clackamas Road-specific issue. It's a society-wide problem we have. And just here in Clackamas County alone, since I've been a Commissioner, we have spent millions and millions and millions—I can't even give you the number—on outreach, on mental health counseling, on addiction counseling, and on law enforcement to try to solve this problem. And the problem's been exacerbated in the past by Measure 110. We—are DA's offices working on this deflection program that'll be started in September, which we hope is going to have a dramatic effect on law enforcement's ability to stop problems from developing to the point that they did on Clackamas Road. So, again, I'm—I—it's very unfortunate that this cost to your company, Ms. Warman, has happened. I can't tell you enough how sorry I am about that. But again, I want you to be able to contrast that expense with the extreme expenditures that we've done and the extreme efforts we've done countywide to stop these—to help prevent these problems from happening. And should—well, when this gate and fence is built, it'll keep out vehicles, and I'm just hoping that seven feet height is going to be enough to keep out individuals with tents from getting in that area, which is—could be a problem. So again, please accept my sincere apology for this whole problem, but please understand the efforts we've done to try to preclude these problems. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion on the table that has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion or alterations we would like to make to the motion?
Chair, I suggest, if with Commissioner West's cooperation, that we withdraw the motion and allow staff to figure out a way—
Commissioner West, you—thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you. I hear that, and I think that's where we're going. I will withdraw the motion and maybe make a motion to direct staff to do that, if we need to do that. Do you need a motion?
You don't need a motion, we'll do it.
Okay. Just, you know, Can-Am chains with the Convacco Manufacturing Corporation, I'm sure they paid a pretty penny in SHS tax, or the supportive housing and service tax.
Oh, yeah.
The metro tax. I'm sure they pay a lot for that. They probably write a big, big check.
Oh, yeah.
And then not only do they have to write that check, they get to write the check for over $100,000 in the last four months while people are out there doing biohazard pickup and everything we heard about. Like, it's just unacceptable. So I hope that staff will come back very soon in a way for us to help mitigate and share this cost because this is not just their cost. And sorry that I got a little passionate. I just think maybe it's time for business to have an advocate and to be respected for the dollars they pay into this, which I know is a lot more than I have paid into it. And so I appreciate their community work in that.
Commissioner West, thank you for your graciousness on withdrawing the motion. I, for one, think we should help this business, Gary. When do you think you could come back with a solution to what we want to do here today?
Tuesday, July 30th.
Okay, that's next Tuesday. Thank you very much. Staff who's involved in this, please work with our Administrator Gary Schmidt on this. I believe that's all we have to discuss on this particular agenda item. Is that right?
That is correct for this public hearing item, yes.
Before we start the next portion of this business meeting, we are going to take a five-minute break. Come back promptly in five minutes. I will start the meeting at exactly 11:25. Thank you very much. Thank you. We are now returning the Board of County Commissioners from our little break. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the consent agenda. It is a long one. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials. Item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of Amendment Number Four with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Improving People's Access to Community-Based Treatment, Supports and Services, Impacts Grant Program. Amendment value, $274,996. Total grant value increased to $983,396. Funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. The Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item three, approval of Amendment Number One with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Fiscal Year 2023-2025 Justice Reinvestment Program Grant. Amendment value, $1,320,076. Total grant value increased to $2,566,240. Funding through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Item four, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the county clerk and Clackamas Community College for placement of an official ballot drop box. Total value of work not to exceed $10,000. Funding through budgeted county general funds and recording fees for the county clerk's office. County Council, item one, designation of newspaper for 2024 property tax foreclosure publication fiscal impact estimated at $3,000. Funding through budgeted county general funds. Finance, item one, approval of a contract with Beckman LLC for the Lake Road Health Center remodel project. Total contract value, $288,000. Funding through health center fees and charges. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a contract with Piper Sandler &amp; Company for debt financial services. Total contract value not to exceed $200,000 over five years. Funding to be encumbered on an as-needed basis by the department incurring debt. No county general funds are involved. Juvenile, item one, approval of Amendment Number Three of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for extending behavioral rehabilitation services. Reimbursements effective July 1, 2024—July 31, 2024 through August 30, 2026. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement in Marion County for juvenile detention services. The Marion County Juvenile Detention Facility. Agreement value not to exceed $1,588,000 over two years. Funding through the Oregon Youth Authority and $205,040 in budgeted county general funds. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a board order authorizing a maintenance program for bridges along local access roads in the county. Total value not to exceed—total value is up to $100,000 per maintenance expenditure. Funding through county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of right-of-way easements and fee property and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions for the Deuce Road Eagle Creek Road Intersection Relocation Project. Total project value, $1,566,106. Apologies, $1,567,106. Funding through the Community Road Fund and System of Development charges. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of right-of-way easements and fee property and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions for the Thesen Road Culvert Replacement Project and Kellag Creek Restoration Project. Total project value, $1,551,635. Funding through county allocated ARPA funds and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a personal services contract with RSNH Incorporated for the Bear Creek Bridge and Malala Avenue Shoulders Project. Total contract value, $539,887.46. Funding through the Community Road Fund and countywide transportation system development charges. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of Amendment Eight with PNC Construction for various scope ads and scheduled lays for the Gladstone Public Library Project. Amendment value, $211,346.39. Total contract value, $33,814,824.69. Funding through county allocated ARPA funds and $115,946.07 in budgeted county general funds. Item six, approval of Goods and Services Contract with Southwest Solutions Group Incorporated for the purchase of library shelving for the newly constructed Gladstone Library. Total contract value, $227,821.74. Funding through budgeted county general funds. Health Housing Human Services, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement for the Share Services Agreement with Health Share of Oregon for traditional health workers' capacity building. Agreement value, $3,579,052. Of that, Clackamas County will receive $300,000 for two years. Funding through Health Share of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of Amendment Number Eight, renewing and increasing funding of the Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Financing of Public Health Services. Amendment value, $5,223,452.84 for one year. Agreement value increased to $11,485,450. Funding through Oregon Health Authority federal and state grants. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a personal services contract with Advantage Nurse Staffing of Oregon Incorporated for on-call medical staffing services. Contract value is $500,000 for five years. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority federal and state grants. No county general funds are involved. Commissioners, with your approval, I would read Items Four through—oh, gosh, this just goes on. Thirteen are all identical items in terms of content. The difference is values. I will read the first and then names and values for the remaining. Item four, approval of Amendment Two, increasing funding to a sub-recipient agreement with the Friends of the Estacada Community Center for services to older adults. Amendment value, $160,344 for one year. Agreement value increased to $333,662 for two years. Funding through the Federal Older Americans Act and state transportation funds for older and disabled residents. No county general funds are involved. Item five is for Foothills Community Church on behalf of the Malali Adult Community Center. Amendment value, $179,229 for one year. Agreement value increased to $370,209 for two years. Item six is for the City of Gladstone on behalf of the Gladstone Community Center. Amendment value, $83,612 for one year. Agreement value increased to $147,525 for two years. Item seven is for Lake Oswego on behalf of the Lake Oswego Adult Community Center. Amendment value, $161,920 for one year. Agreement value increased to $315,290 for two years. Item eight is for the City of Oregon City on behalf of its Pioneer Community Center. Amendment value, $233,197 for one year. Agreement value increased to $458,628 for two years. Item nine is for the City of Sandy on behalf of its Sandy Senior and Community Center. Amendment value, $112,934. Agreement value increased to $226,039 for two years. Item ten is for the City of Wilsonville on behalf of the Wilsonville Community Center. Amendment value, $135,320 for one year. Agreement value increased to $254,520 for two years. Item eleven is for the Hoodland Senior Center. Amendment value, $124,662. Agreement value increased to $235,405 for two years. Item twelve is for the Friends of the Can Be Adult Center for the Can Be Adult Center. Amendment value, $323,037 for one year. Agreement value increased to $660,790 for two years. Item number thirteen is with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District on behalf of the Milwaukee Community Center. Amendment value, $462,652 for one year. Agreement value increased to $916,640 for two years. Item fourteen, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Portland State University for evaluation of Zero Suicide Framework Initiatives. Agreement value, $64,338 for six months. Funding through the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. No county general funds are involved. Item fifteen, approval of Amendment Number Two, extending the duration and increasing the funding of a revenue lease agreement with Genoa Healthcare LLC for lease of clinical space. Amendment value, $3,253.25 for seven months. Agreement value is fifteen—is now $15,373.31 for 15 months. Funding through Genoa Healthcare LLC. No county general funds are involved. Item sixteen, approval of a personal services contract with Advantage Nurse Staffing of Oregon Incorporated for temporary staffing services. Contract value is $2,500,000 for five years. Funding through health centers, fees for services. No county general funds are involved. Item seventeen, approval of a cooperative agreement with Clackamas County Community Health Council for co-application to the United States Department of Health and Human Services Primary Care Grant. This is a no-cost agreement for two years. No county general funds are involved. Item eighteen, approval of Amendment Number Three, increasing funding from an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Financing of Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment Recovery and Prevention and Problem Gambling Services. Amendment value is $1,000,000 for 13 months. Agreement value is increased to $16,854,233.26 for 18 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item nineteen, approval of Amendment Number Four, increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Financing of Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment Recovery and Prevention and Problem Gambling Services. Amendment value is $211,000 for 12 months. $211,000 for 12 months. Agreement value is increased to $17,65,233.26 for 18 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item twenty, approval of Amendment Number Five, increasing funding from an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for financing community mental health addiction treatment recovery and prevention and problem gambling services. Amendment value, $498,809.09 for 12 months. Agreement value is increased to $17,564,033.35 for 18 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item twenty-one, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Project Quest for non-opioid pain management services. Total agreement value, $190,908.90 for 12 months. Funding through opioid settlement funds. No county general funds are involved. Item twenty-two, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Central City Concern for Chez Ami Mental Health Housing Operations. Total agreement value, $427,040.71 for 36 months. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Bravo, Tony. Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as eloquently and wonderfully read by our clerk, and I hope he has time for a glass of water.
Second. Commissioner West has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner West has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes five-zero. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary.
Next is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. I will read this. Item one, approval of amendment number two to a sub-recipient grant with Clackamas County for ongoing delivery of Older American Act funded services at the Milwaukee Community Center. Amendment value is $462,652 for one year, bringing the total agreement value to $916,640 for two years. Funding is through state and federal grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Gary. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this particular consent agenda? Excuse me, Director. I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second. Thank you. Director Scholl has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the poll?
Director West?
Aye.
Director Savas?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes five-zero. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary.
Next is the consent agenda for the Development Agency of Clackamas County. I will read this. Item one, approving an amendment to and termination of a district funding agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One. Total value is $1,174,048, funding through tax increment financing. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approving a district funding agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One. Total value is $1,200,000, funding through tax increment financing. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that is the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove any items? I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Schrader has moved for the approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Director Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the poll?
Director Savas?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes five-zero. I will now adjourn as the Development Agency Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. We are at public communications. The portion of this meeting shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. The testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be courteous and respectful to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I do not see but anyone in the room who would like to testify today who is in person. Tony, do you have anyone online?
Madam Chair, do not have any, currently have any members of the public on Zoom.
Thank you. I will now close the public communications portion of this meeting and move on. Administrator Gary Schmidt, you're up.
Thank you. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our employees and our programs here at the county. First, while the Board had a recess, our pothole crews did not. They were working quickly and efficiently to resolve pothole issues in Clackamas County. They did so in the Colton area, and a resident wrote in, "Thank you for the fast response to my long list of potholes on Elwood Road." You got to a lot of them, and we got to all of them. So, thank you very much to that compliment and to our staff and the road crews in the Department of Transportation and Development. Next, our Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, Parole and Probation Division, have been operating a mobile stabilization outreach unit for just over a year. This unit was created to bring enhanced wraparound service events to adults who are supervised after being released from jail. The goal is to help ensure that these vulnerable clients obtain basic needs, which in turn increases public safety and reduces jail usage. There are monthly events now being held with this stabilization outreach unit throughout Clackamas County, including in Milwaukee, Oregon City, Canby, and Sandy. Participants can access services aimed at substance abuse, disorder treatment, mental health, housing, food stamps, and more. Within the first year, 104 people have been served or attended these events, and notably nine previously unhoused clients have found housing through the program. So, thank you to our Sheriff's Office and partners in the program, Clackamas County's Health Housing and Human Services Department, Behavioral Health Division, the State of Oregon, Parrot Creek, and several nonprofits, including Love One and Father's Heart. So, thank you to our Sheriff's Office team and our Health Housing Human Services staff for this very innovative program. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. And we will now move on to Commissioner Communication, and first, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Clackamas County. I'd like to remind everybody in the county that today, in the state of Oregon, we have 36 fires burning. So far, our county has been very, very lucky in that we have no fires burning today, and we need to keep it that way. So, I encourage every family in Clackamas County to stop what you're doing, take a moment, visit clackamas.us/disastermanagement. Look at the website there. It's got a lot of information, and please look at evacuation levels, what to do on each evacuation level. Look at evacuation routes, have a family plan. Also, give some consideration to your business, and look at the link on there regarding creating a defensible space around your property. This is very important. Please take time to plan. Don't wait for a problem to happen before you look at these links. Also, on voting, I want people to know that every day, our county clerk works to ensure that the voter rolls are updated, but the clerk needs your help. If you've moved or have a change, please go to our county clerk website. There's a link on there that takes you to oregonvotes.gov, and look at your registration. Make sure it's correct. Make sure your address is correct. If it's not, contact the clerk, or you can fix it online. But take action. Don't assume that your voter registration is correct. Also, if somebody in your family has passed away, please notify the county clerk to get that updated. Also, you need to register in this county by 15 October to be able to vote, to get a ballot in the general election this November. And so, please do that. Again, you can do that by visiting our county clerk website. You can also look and see where the official ballot drop sites are nearest to your home, and you can get a link on there too for tracking your ballot. So, again, the voter rolls are, in part, your responsibility. Please make sure they're updated. Also, on county parks, our county staff has been working very hard to prepare the county parks for your enjoyment this summer. Go to the clackamas.us parks, find a park that you like, and please visit it as soon as possible. Also, I'd like to put a pitch for our neighbors at Warm Springs who have just, this last week, opened up the new Canita Spa and Resort. If you get a chance to get out there, please visit and support the Warm Springs Nation. And again, thank you very much, Clackamas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history for everyone and then get to my point. Years ago, when former Commissioner Bill Kenner became state representative, he initiated some work and legislative discussion around trying to get the, this particular region, which is now Region One of the Area Commission on Transportation, to get established an act. The entire state had an act except for this particular portion of the region, and it was assumed that JPAC would, it was that body, so therefore there was no need. However, JPAC's boundaries are Metro's boundaries, and that left the rural part of Clackamas County, which is heavily populated, and a lot of other counties, left them without an act. So, long story short, with Oregon consensus, that was put into action to try to get a solution, and lo and behold, the Region One Act was formed. The original founders of that, myself, Commissioner Rogers, were the only two people that were elected officials that were part of that foundation, but he recently resigned. He's termed out at the end of this year, and I took over as from vice chair to chair. And I just want to let you know that apparently, and I'm asking maybe our legal counsel to look into this a little bit, but, and see if it applies to counties, but they have, are now asking the Acts, or at least this Act for the most part, to adopt the bylaw changes that are consistent with state law, which includes changing, perhaps, the members of the Act to better represent their diversity, equity populations that were accurately reflected in the people representing Clackamas County. So, I've asked for some more information about that. It's on the agenda for next Monday night. I believe next Monday night's, well, that's actually August 5th, so maybe two, maybe, yeah, August 5th is the next Act meeting. So, I don't know if it'll be adopted right away. It'll hopefully be informed, but it might actually conflict with the individual ability of the Acts, the counties in this case, to select their members based on, Clackamas County, we have one representative for rural cities, one representative for urban cities, we have a business representative, we have a community at-large representative, and so on. So, we have these very specific seats, and I'm very proud, frankly, with the exception of one, that we are the only county that still has all those original members in place, with the exception of one. And that former member was now Congresswoman Lori Chavez Dreamer, who is now being, that seat's now being filled by Counselor Brett Sherman. So, we are intact, essentially, and we have a good group, we have a good group of people. However, we might be forced to change, and I don't know if state law applies to us as well in our committees at a broader question. Are we, is this state law that's being cited such that our committee structures and all of our ABCs have to represent that, or is this specific to the state? That's my first question. But I did thought I would apprise you of some discussions that are happening that might actually conflict with how we, again, fill those positions. Are we forced to make all those people resign and refill the position according to state law or whatnot? So, I would, I don't know how we do that, but I guess the mechanics, it's not, it's not a problem for Clackamas County as far as our administration. It might be for our ability to represent. We have a certain method of appointing people. Multnomah County has a different method. Washington County and Hood River, they all have different adopted into the bylaws that they select the people versus ODOT selecting the people to represent those counties. So, why not just alert you of that potential change, and I'm gonna try to sort out more legal questions as to how we do that without interfering with our ability, again, to select those folks. But that was part of what's been going on the last three weeks that I've been working on, and amongst other things, but I just thought I would share that with you today, and for that, I will yield to, back to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. I had the pleasure, while we were on our break, to join both you and Commissioner Schrader in Florida to go to the National Association of Counties Conference, Annual Conference. I found it to be quite productive. While I was there, we were very acutely aware that much of Oregon is ablaze right now. And, Chair, we had a conversation privately about how my family's cabin burnt to the ground. My cousin owned it. He's out there now picking up what's left, and it isn't a lot. The campground that we had camped at for generations is gone. We've been there, on that side of my family, they've been there for 90 years. It's amazing to me, like, it was the first time, like, I felt like a personal loss connected to land. It was like, I remember talking to, and I know you're a farmer, and you know, and Commissioner Schrader, you being from Canby, and maybe all of us have different stories, but it was emotional, probably even more so for the other members of my family that were more connected to that part of them, but it's gone. It's just gone. And it's, and it, you know, we were just there last October with my uncle who's battling bone cancer, and that was an important trip, and that might be the last memory right there that we have together. Not because Uncle Wayne's not doing great, thank God he is, with battling cancer, but because it's gone. It's just, it's quite disheartening. And it was, it's kind of like you look back and reflect on things like these conferences and try to pull what you can to get out of them. A lot of conversation happened with the Association of Oregon Counties, Oregon specifically, and WIR. And so, for, I don't know how much public is actually gonna watch this or watching this right now, but WIR is like a subgroup out of Naco, and it's the western interstate region, and it's this association of all the western states that deal with a lot of issues that western states deal with uniquely. So, some of these are large counties, some of them, a lot of rural counties, and public lands, wildfires, and all of those topics are forefront right now, especially in this season, with states like Oregon, Montana, Northern California, Utah, the state of Washington. But it includes, you know, Arizona, Wyoming, New Mexico, I think the Dakotas, Hawaii is a western state, rural west, is Alaska? I don't know if Alaska, Alaska's included in that too, yeah. So, there had, and I don't know if the Board's aware of this, but as I've been going to a lot of the meetings down in Salem with the Association of Oregon Counties, I've been getting more and more engaged, and a lot of the, there's been a lot of consternation and tension between Oregon and the rest of the western states related to the uniqueness we have in our timber related to ONC lands. And, or, right now, the Association of Oregon Counties is actually not paying dues to WIR, even though we're part of that region, because of the tension and the advocacy and the lobbying and the misunderstanding between many of the western states and Oregon. And Clackamas has ONC lands. We are one of the counties that unique, this is a very unique thing that's been in statute since the turn of the century, the 20th century, even into the, before that, and it is actually has the ability for those timber lands, when they can be used as production, to provide quite a bit of revenue to counties like Douglas, even Clackamas, kind of because we have ONC lands. And there's scattered timber sites throughout the west. And we, as a county, I don't think have been as engaged as we could have been, or as a state, and there's been a lot of tension. We have new representation. We were being represented by Tim Freeman, I believe, out of Douglas County, and Judge Joyce out of Malheur County. The AOC has appointed new members, and we're making some headway. Great negotiations happened between trying to get better understanding with the west, the rest of the western states as we deal with specifically ONC lands, and trying to kind of bring everybody back in the fold at the, and so, there's been some, but there was some progress made as we were able to all get together at the conference to really come together. You understand Oregon's uniqueness while also kind of moving the ball down the field. So, that was very productive that happened at Naco. I spent a lot of time, and I want to just give a shout out to Commissioner Derek Derout out of Clamath County, spending a lot of time with me, as I had lots and lots of questions to develop and learn about this. It's fascinating. It's complicated. Commissioner Schrader, you've served a long time on the WIR previously. I know, Commissioner Scholl, you were close with ONC lands, so we are trying to engage, but that was a great learning opportunity, and I think we made some headway with my own. But that was a great learning opportunity, and I think we made some headway with Wyoming and Montana and those, and Northern California, some tensions that were happening. I spent a ton of time in health policy meetings. I appreciate being there with the President of the Association of Counties, Daniel Bethel, who also cares deeply about health policy. And we were engaging in that for an entire day. We taught, we also went and did significant engagement on how to manage and get out opioid dollars, different little pockets of excellence around the country, and ideas and solutions around homelessness. And I want to give a congratulations, at the last day of the conference, they have the big business meeting, congratulations to Commissioner James Gore out of Sonoma County for being elected the new incoming president of Naco. I hope that you come visit us here in Oregon soon, and maybe we can show you some of the great things we are doing in Clackamas. I want to make the board aware that, don't worry on my own dime, I will be flying down to Dallas to meet with the incoming president of Naco, J.D. Clark. He's the first vice president after James Gore serves his year. He will be the new incoming president. He's very interested in hearing about our amazing work around recovery and homelessness and the things written housing and the things that we're doing uniquely different than maybe they've seen throughout the rest of the region. So, I'm going to have dinner, spend time with him, and I really want to highlight, hopefully, that we can replicate some of the things we've done in Clackamas County on a national level, and maybe get a little bit of a stronger lobbying force as we deal with this chronic issue, utilizing Naco to its fullest. So, I will be going in September to meet with the incoming president. And then, I will close with this, Recovery Campus and Center, first community meetings tonight. So, it's important if anybody in the community would like to engage and learn more about what we are doing there with this, with this recovery center, what our plans are, but our goal is to hear from you. And so, come and tell us your thoughts, what you're excited about, what your concerns are. We are there to listen and do community outreach. And so, it's exciting that this is the first night of that. I know there's a lot going on for all of us tonight. I know that there's also a sun, I'm going to say it right this time, rise, not set, sunrise corridor meeting also happening. And I believe that we'll see some of Metro and other local electeds that will be attending the Recovery Center Community Meeting tonight, as we begin to kick this off and it begins to move forward. It's exciting stuff. Whew. And there's a lot more going on, but I'm sure there'll be other opportunities to share. And, yeah, it was, it was a great and productive time in Naco, and I had a great time with my colleagues, and I'm glad that we were able to get good county business done in Florida.
Thank you. It was, it was a great time. Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you. I also had the opportunity to go to the National Association of Counties. I got there a day and a half early with the intention of going to the technology meetings, and I did bring, and so did Chair Smith, bring back information on artificial intelligence. I haven't talked to this about our administrator yet, but they wanted to ask me as a commissioner to join that initiative and team and work forward, because they actually have us work together with the technical IT folks, and they want other, more government-oriented people to be a part of that conversation. So, I'll talk about it, Gary, and we'll see, see what happens with that. I finished my term as the Community Economic and Workforce Development, got to go wave at all of you, and we were there on stage. As I walked out, it was been a great, a great two years, and I will maintain my presence on that community. And my dear friend Angela Conley, I believe is, I want to say from Minnesota, is now the new chair. And I was very lucky to get the appointment for two years, because that doesn't always happen. So, I, I really thanked Denise Winfrey for getting me started, and Mary Jo, who was our president, who just is now the, on the board still, for keeping me in that position. But another role that they've asked me to do is be part of what they call their Leadership Advisory Council for Economic Mobility. And that consists of 13 of us from around the nation that are going to be working on projects with experts on land use, data, housing, you name it, every piece that has to do with economic mobility. We're starting to focus first on small rural counties, because they have unique challenges and limited resources, and since our county is both urban and rural, I think that's going to be very exciting. And we actually have given out grants. The group of us looked at a number of grants for rural counties throughout the nation, and thanks to the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundations, we are funding economic mobility projects. And people always go, what do you mean by that? Well, economic mobility is essentially centered on the goal that each generation can achieve greater financial well-being than the previous one. And in recent decades, that goal has become harder to reach. I know, Commissioner Scholl, you've mentioned that on more than one occasion. Only about half of Americans born since 1980 go on to earn more than their parents did. So, what is our goal here? Here is to use evidence-based and community-informed economic development strategies that, that we can use, that county leaders can use to reverse this trend and help move Americans out of poverty and to up the echelon of prosperity. And I know, I've mentioned this before, Commissioner Scholl had championed the Canby Center, and I use that all the time as a, as a example of what that does, because they bring everybody together for services, including financial education, so on and so forth. That is really helping a community that hasn't had as many opportunities, some of the rural areas there, to move up the economic prosperity ladder. So, I'm pretty excited about that. So, I'll be doing more with technology, keeping my finger on the pulse of economic mobility, and doing all kinds of things with the Economic Mobility Resource Hub. Look at Naco, and you can find all that information. Finally, I have had an intern here this week, Chris Lowe. He's a student at Lake Oswego High School, and he's been kind of my test case for the iCivics program that Naco has partnered with. It's a group in Cambridge, Mass., Massachusetts, and its, its purpose is to engage students in meaningful civic learning with well-written inventive and free resources that enhance their practice and inspire young people, because it's education about our democracy. And there are all kinds of resources for activities for educators and families. And this week, Mr. Lowe has shadowed me. We visited Public Works and Transportation. We've been to our records and election department, had a conversation with some of our human services folks. We're going today, this afternoon, to take a look at our Public Works, new Public Works building. If Chris has time next week, I can also get him a visit to the jail, if he wants to do that. And then, and then our major sewer system that we run here with, and this is less boring, Chris, than watching us be talking heads, because there we, you'll get to see, like, the really big stuff we work with, the flush toilets and fix roads, you know, which will be a lot of fun for you, I think. The other thing I want to just mention is the Fourth of July, because this was the first time in a long time that I was in England for the Fourth of July. And I thought, boy, and it was 55 degrees and pouring out, okay? So, you're having a heat dome, and we're, I'm out there trying to get a, find a jacket, because I didn't bring one with me. And that wasn't too much fun. But the gist of this was, my older daughter Claire is a Brownie leader. And so, on the Fourth of July, this was so hysterical, she decided with her other Brownie leaders that she would teach all these little English gal, these little girls, these eight-year-olds, line dancing, western line dancing, I swear to God. And by God, I didn't know how this was going to work, you know? So, she got the music going, you know? She wore cowboy boots, you know, had the hat on, and all these little girls on the Fourth of July in England were doing western line dancing. She talked about our rodeo. She talked about the fair. So, even though, folks, I wasn't here for the Fourth, my spirit, the spirit of America crossing the ocean to be, be with my, my family brought a little bit of America to their shores. And then, I got to watch, this is the other funny thing that happened, because she's a Brownie leader, they did Brownie Day outside with rope climbing and archery, you know, giving little kids bows and arrows, and I'm like, oh, God, someone's going to shoot each other. But all this outdoor work, and again, it was 55 degrees and pouring out, but that didn't stop the English. I swear, I think that's how they won the war. They just go out there in cold drear and, you know, stay calm and carry on. And it was, it was amazing, because they had the rock climbing, and my granddaughter climbed all the way up to the top. It was at least a story or more tall.
Wow.
I was terrified. My daughter wasn't terrified. I was terrified. But she made it, and I got a chance to see her and enjoy that. So, I just thought I'd share a few of those personal things. But line dancing with little English girls has got to be at the top of one of my, my best, one of my best experiences. And they were pretty good. They were actually pretty good. So, enough from me. Thank you, Chair. For indulging me here.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. That does sound like it was fun. Regarding potholes, Gary, I also noticed the road crew is paving swaths of road, like 20 and 30 feet long, where there is a structural deficiency, and especially on Beaver Creek Road. There's a couple of dips, I assume because there's underground water, that is a sinkhole, it's not quite a hole, and they've been doing that on Beaver Creek Road, at least in nice swaths, in addition to the potholes. And I'm very thankful for that, because it saves the shocks on my car if I happen to go over it too fast and I catch air. Not really. So, thank you very much, road crew, for saving my car. We've talked about the fire situation. I'm going to reiterate again. Although we haven't had a whole lot of fires in Clackamas County, we've had small ones, and they have been put out immediately. And I want to thank our fire department. The state law was changed that we can take residential fire tankers onto farmland to put out brush fires, grass fires, vegetation fires, and that has really abated the fire emergency, along with the technology from Portland General Electric, who've installed cameras throughout the region and in our mountains to watch for lightning strikes that could cause fires. However, the economic devastation may not be felt in Clackamas County. I know of several of my friends who have ranches in the area where these fires are, and it's a huge swath of eastern Oregon. One particular Wilson logging company, Wilson Construction, maybe now, own quite a large ranch over there, and fire consumed their house and barn and 600 head of cattle. And that's very real. And this is happening more than not. My very close friends own a 2,000-acre ranch at a acre, and the ranch next to them burned to the ground and destroyed hundreds of cattle. And I talked to Connie last night, and they're almost in a panic. She says, "Tudy, we were told by the owners of the ranch that burned, you're fine for now, but if the winds change, you will be devastated, along with all the other ranchers over there." And so, they have left orders to open up the gates and let all the cattle out. So, that's what the ranches are doing. They're opening up the gates. Cows cannot run. Have you ever been around cows? We raise cows. They really can't run. The fire will overtake them instantly. And it's just, it's just very sad. Also, they are lacking in resources. I have a very good friend that works for the Oregon Department of Forestry, who was on a fishing trip with my husband over at Willawa Lake, which, by the way, the update on that area, they had hundreds of lightning strikes over there recently, and they're watching for fires in that area. The White House called him and said, "What do you need?" Well, we might get some help. The governor might send the National Guard in four or five days from now. I'm saying, why is it taking so long for our state and federal agencies to lend support? They don't have fire people to fight the fires, they don't have equipment, and they don't have airplanes, and they don't have helicopters. And this area is a huge, huge economic disaster. There are at least almost 1 million acres that have burned in eastern Oregon and Washington, was a report I saw this morning. And they're calling them mega fires, where 100,000 acres will just burn at one time, one flashpoint. And it's sad. So, I'm just hoping Clackamas County residents, some of these are caused by lightning, some of them are human-caused, and please, please do not set campfires, do not use fireworks. And my husband has even gone so far as, we have mowing that needs to be done on our farm, because the grass is very tall, but friction. If your mower hits a rock, it'll cause friction, and then you get a fire. We're not even doing that on our area. So, everybody, please be mindful of your human activities. This is not a normal year where we can enjoy our geography like the way we want to. So, with that in mind, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Commissioners, for a long session, but productive session. We are adjourned.